Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for September 20, 2022. At this time, I'd like to start the meeting off by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know it's not on the agenda, but I was wondering if we could have a moment of silence or prayer for Jen Callahan's sister who passed away yesterday?
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement on behalf of Jen. Like Dennis said, unexpectedly, her sister passed away over the weekend, and we are thinking of Jen and her family in our thoughts and prayers, and I'd like to take a moment of silence to think of Jen and her family and her sister. Thank you very much. All right, first thing on the agenda tonight is approving the minutes, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 16th meeting.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Motion approved. We're going to go on to the next one is approving the minutes of the executive session meeting. I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
I will make that motion.
I second.
Okay, Robert, seconds. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll abstain. Let the record show three in the affirmative, two abstentions. All right, we have a proclamation tonight. It's National Fire Prevention Week from October 19th to 15th, 2022. Declaration of and proclamation presented to the Fire Department and Personnel. And I'd like to take a vote to declare the week of October 9th through 15th as National Fire Prevention Week for the town of Oxford. Looking for a motion.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussing guys, any girls? Okay, Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I vote yes. So at this time, I'd like to have Chief McDonald come up, and I'm going to read this proclamation and thank the chief and his force for protecting us and doing a great job, and your services are much appreciated. And here's the proclamation. The town of Oxford is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in our town, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at their greatest risk from fire, and whereas smoke alarms should be installed inside every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, on every level of your home, smoke alarms should be interconnected so that when one sounds, they all sound, and whereas Oxford residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas Oxford residents should make sure their home escape plan meets the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas residents should practice their home fire drill at least twice a year with everyone in the household, including guests, practice at least once during the day and at night, whereas Oxford first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education, and whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," effectually serves to remind residents of Oxford and its importance to have home fire escape plan. Therefore, we, the town manager and the Board of Selectmen of the town of Oxford, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week, and further extend appreciation to selfless dedication of Oxford fire responders, and urge all residents to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the town of Oxford's Fire and Emergency Services, given under our hands this date, 20th day of September, 2022. And it's been signed by the town manager, and we have to sign it?
No, it's here.
Oh, that's right, I got this. So Larry, at this time, we'd like to present you this certificate, and once again, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Do we want to take a picture?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
You want to give them that?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, give them the good one.
You don't want the coffee?
Give them the pretty one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the men and women of the Oxford Fire and Emergency Services, I want to thank you for this proclamation, in particular this evening, but in general, too. I want to thank you for the wide range of support that you provide to us, both yourselves and then the Finance Committee and the citizens of town. We cannot do our job without that kind of support, and I'm proud to be part of this community where we enjoy that continued support. We get cards and letters all the time from citizens. We have people coming in to the station to thank us, and I often tell people, you know, the environments that we're called to work in are deadly. The tools of our trade in unskilled and untrained hands can take life or limb just as quickly as they can save it, and I am very pleased to have such a dedicated staff who train regularly and enjoy the support of the community. So it's what makes us a very well-rounded fire and emergency service organization. We're more than just a fire department, and that's because of the dedication of the men and women that serve with me and because of the men and women, the citizens of this town. So we're proud to serve, to save, and we're very thankful for all that you've given us to be able to do our job, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and as I say, we appreciate what you folks do for us.
Likewise.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, we have another proclamation. This is the, the board has been asked to present a proclamation to carry in the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. The request is from Steven Feirstein, Mass. Volunteer Director, and Dr. Amy Feinstein, Volunteer Clinical Service Director, for Kids Cancer Connection. So I'm looking to...
I will make a motion to declare September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Looking for the vote?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. Let the record show five in affirmative. Motion passes. And I will, I don't think there's anyone here tonight to take this, so I will read the proclamation. Whereas child cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas in 285 children in the United States, one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, and whereas 46 children per day, 16,709 children per year are diagnosed with cancer in U.S., and whereas the average age of diagnosed is 16 years old compared to 66 years for adults, cancer and diagnosed, whereas 80% of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late and with metastatic disease, and whereas 2/3 of the childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with 1/4 being classified as severe to life-threatening, and whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations of local and national level, including the American Child Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families to cope with education, emotional, and financial support, and whereas research and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Therefore, we, the town manager and the Board of Selectmen of the town of Oxford, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the town of Oxford, given under our hands this day, 20th day of September, 2022. So that's the proclamation, and we'll get this out to the appropriate people. All right, we have some permits that people are looking for. The first one is an outdoor business permit for scarecrows on the common and a vendor fair to be held at Jocelyn Park on Saturday, October 22nd, 2022, requested by Oxford Community Center Director, Sherry Lambert. So I'm looking for a motion to grant this special permit.
I will make that motion.
And I will second that motion.
Any discussion, any of the board members? Okay, Amy?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion passes, five to none. Next one. We have a dangerous dog order violation. It's pursuant MGL Chapter 140, Section 157, and Section 157A. The owner, the dog's name was Hank. The owner was Joyce Belvery of 1 Hamilton Street, Oxford, Mass. So Kelly, I'd like you to come up and kind of give us a little bit of background as to what this is about so we can take the proper action.
Okay, so on March 19th, 2019, the Board of Selectmen deemed Hank a dangerous dog, and one, I enclosed the whole order in there for you guys, but one of the things that she was supposed to do was have, if she took the dog off the premises, was supposed to have a muzzle and a leash on the dog. So she took the dog to the 200 Sportsman's Club, and she apparently, I guess she was friends with the custodian, so they were inside the building, and then the treasurer came to drop off an envelope with his wife, and his wife actually walked up to the door, and apparently there's two doors at the 200 Sportsman's Club. So when she was at one door, Joyce and, no, well, Hank too, but the custodian would come, they must have opened the door to come out, but they didn't have Hank on a leash or have a muzzle on, and poor Eleanor, the lady that got bit, she didn't even see or hear the dog coming, she just all of a sudden got bit, and she got bit three times on her buttocks. So it was a pretty good, pretty bad incident. So I spoke to Joyce. The dog was also having some health issues, and she agreed to euthanize the dog, but she didn't have enough money to do that. So I did, she assigned the dog over to the town of Oxford and accompanied me and the dog to Tufts Veterinary Hospital. They actually brought the dog and was, they were in the room when the dog was euthanized. And Tufts did remove, they took off some of the bill. They do that sometimes for municipalities. They give us a break on things, and a friend of Joyce's paid for the dog to be cremated. So the total bill from Tufts was $50, and then we did also incur a bill of about 50, a little more than 50, from Webster Lake Vet for some sedation for the dog. So the cost of the town was approximately $100.
Okay. Well, we do have something from Town Council telling us that we cannot fine her more than $50, so that's the most we can fine her.
Because it's a first offense, so under 174.
Okay. So I guess what we need from the board is, number one, let's, we need to vote as to whether or not there was a violation. So I'm looking for a motion to determine that there was a violation specifically to what Kelly just said, the dog was not on a leash and it wasn't, didn't have a muzzle on it. So I'm looking for a motion to declare that there was a violation.
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, of the ACO, is the, is this person here, the owner of the animal?
I don't see her anywhere.
Was this person notified that we were going to be having this, this matter?
Doesn't have to be.
The only reason I ask is from a due process standpoint. If the person doesn't know that we're making this decision today and they don't have an opportunity to provide their side of the story, I mean presumably they explained to you their side of the story?
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
That would be, that would be my concern, Mr. Chairman. Additionally, so this, I know that you've obviously been very busy lately. There's been a lot of kind of difficult things going on. This was kind of happening in parallel with the other incident.
We're not going to talk about the other incident?
Oh, no, it's not about the other incident.
We're talking solely about this incident?
Yes.
The, she explained that the owner did go with her to Tufts to euthanize the dog, that it was paid for, so the owner was behind us 100%, and I don't want, do not want to get into discussion of any other thing that we're talking about.
No.
At the appropriate time, well, you just said any other incidents.
Yeah, I was just, I just had a question for the ACO.
No more questions. That's not, it's not, you said the other incident. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm not asking you about the other incident.
But why did you say you wanted, in reference to the other incident?
That it was, there were other things occurring at the time, and I wanted to ask the ACO through you, Mr. Chairman.
We're not going to allow that. You've asked a question. The owner, as I say, went with her to have the dog put down. She agreed to turn it over to the town. What my question is right now is I'm looking for a motion to determine that there was a violation. So that's the motion on the floor. I'm looking, if there's no other discussion, you all set?
Could I ask you my question, then you can decide whether or not you want the ACO to answer?
No, no, no. You started your conversation by saying in reference to the other...
I don't want to ask about the other incident.
But you brought it up. I'm not going to talk about this anymore, Robert. We're talking about this particular incident. I'm looking, if you have nothing else to say about this incident, then we're going to move on.
Well, I do. That's what I'm saying. I wanted to ask about this incident.
Then why did you say in reference to the other incident?
I was just pointing out that there was a lot of things going on. I wanted to ask the ACO.
We don't, we don't really care about a lot of things going on. We're focusing on this...
Why does this upset you so much, Mr. Chairman?
Because you're, first of all, you're not staying with the topic, all right? There is nothing on the agenda talking about the other incident.
He didn't even get the question out of his mouth.
Yes, he made the comment by saying in reference to the other incident. All right, and I'm not going to talk about this anymore. We're going to move on. Does anybody have any other comment to make regarding this particular incident?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I was trying to be deferential to the ACO to acknowledge that the ACO...
I'm moving on. I'm calling for the vote. Amy?
We're voting on...
Was there a violation?
If there was violation, so yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Abstain.
I vote yes. Let's, the motion show that three to zero, there was a violation. All right, the next part, we need to determine what the fine will be, and according to Town Council, we can't fine any more than $50. So I'm looking for a motion for a fine of $50 to be given to Joyce Belvery.
I will make the motion.
And I will second that motion.
Any conversation about that?
I feel that if she couldn't afford to put the dog away, $50 might be too much for her. Can we make it 25?
How does the rest of the board feel about that?
The fine schedule, according to the law, it starts at 50. I don't know, maybe we could ask Town Council if we can go less than that.
Okay, we have a request to go to $25. How does the board feel about that?
I'm fine.
You all set? Are you fine with $25?
I'm not going to comment on this matter further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Tim?
Same vote.
All right, then I will call for the, I will call for the vote of having the fine reduced to $25.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Abstain.
I will vote yes. Let the record show, the fine will be $25, and you are authorized to give her a ticket. All right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next thing. Town, special town warrant. There are 13 articles under town warrant, and what we are looking for, what we're looking for is to have the Board of Selectmen approve the special town meeting warrant and let it go to the town meeting attendees to get the, their approval or opinion. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the warrant and send it to town meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the special town warrant for special town meeting on October 5th, 2022, to be held at the Oxford Middle School.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any conversation?
I had some questions about the articles, but obviously the manager's in here. I don't know if maybe the Finance Director can comment?
You can ask your question. Go ahead. Maybe Dee can answer some.
Unfortunately, the ACO isn't here, but I don't know if the ACO could speak to this. I wanted to know about the proposed increases in license fees and kind of how we arrived at these new numbers. You know, if, I know in the past, they've said that they kind of look at surrounding towns to try and decide on those, and I was wondering if we could speak to how much this does or doesn't offset the cost for those departments, since that's the whole reason we collect the fees.
Let's, let's focus on what our job is here tonight, okay? We are focused here to send the warrant to the town meeting to let the decision, the citizens decide what we're going to do. That's the whole point of it. So this is a discussion that we could have, or a question you could ask at town meeting.
Yeah, no, the, I mean, the point to ask it now is just that we get it into the public record, and then people, you know, who watch this meeting hopefully would be aware of that, and then it wouldn't even be a question at town meeting. People would already know.
Well, I know the warrant is published, and like I say, our job here tonight is to approve the town meeting warrant and let the voters decide. And if, I don't know if there's anyone here that can answer that question, Dee, as to how we arrived at this.
Inflation.
I don't have that information from the town clerk. However, she will be able to answer that question at town meeting.
Okay, right. This is, again, that, we're not asked to decide whether or not we support the article. We're just being asked to send it to the meeting.
Well, so in some cases, you know, we make, we have articles to ask the Board of Selectmen to do something. So like, for example, here we have an article asking the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement to purchase the property and to provide appropriation for such.
Mm-hmm.
So then my understanding would be that after that town meeting vote, then we would have to have a vote again of the Board of Selectmen to execute on that?
I believe so.
Accurate?
I believe so.
Because that didn't happen after the last town meeting with Article 13.
I can't say for sure, Robert, but it's my understanding that's what's supposed to happen. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Robert. Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes as well. Articles are approved. They will be decided on at the town meeting. Next thing, Nichols College recognition and reception. Thank you. I, I know some of us, some of you attended the reception at Nichols College, and I think on behalf of the board, we would like to thank them for the invitation, and I don't know if any of you that attended want to make a comment.
I have a prepared statement.
Let's hear it.
I wanted to take a moment to thank the entire Nichols community for a wonderful night of football. The entire night was a lot of fun, and the game was really exciting. I was also able to walk through the campus afterwards and tour some of the updated and new facilities, and the new building is beautiful with amazing technology. It's, if you guys haven't seen it, you should. It's very impressive, so I look forward to attending many more events at the college.
Who won the game?
Nichols did. Oh, yeah, it was a high score, too.
Anyone else, Robert? Sure.
I'd just like to extend a warm thank you to the president for opening up his house to us and the selectmen from the other communities. It was an amazing opportunity, and I appreciate the, you know, the, I can't think of the word for it right now, the, just the courteousness, the invitation, it was just, it was very warming.
Okay, thank you very much. Next thing, we have an appointment. We'd like to appoint Deborah King to the Cultural Council. The appointment is for a three-year term, which would expire in June 30th, 2025. Looking for a motion to appoint Deborah.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion about the appointment? Okay, I'll call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative. Deborah is appointed. All right, another one is an application for a special pouring license submitted by Todd Langway, Days End Tavern, located at 28 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. for an outdoor post-golf event. Mr. Langway is asking for a special one-day pouring license for an event to be held on October 8th, 2022, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 287 Main Street, Side Park Lot. Mr. Langway is the holder of a current pouring license at Days End Tavern. According to the ABCC, a special pouring license may be issued for non-licensed premises in case the side parking lot outdoor area, but there shall be no cross operations between the two licensed areas. Mr. Langway stated that he would not have any cross operations between the two areas. This event will be held at the end of the golf tournament on the same day. So looking for a motion to grant this special pouring license.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. Let the record show, five in the affirmative. Another application for a special pouring license submitted by Oxford VFW Post 5663, located at 20 Federal Hill Road, Oxford, for an outdoor cornhole tournament. The Oxford VSW Post 5663 is asking the Board for a special pouring license for September 24th, 2022, for the purpose of alcohol service during a cornhole tournament. According to the ABCC, a special pouring license may be issued for non-licensed premises in the case the outdoor area noted on the sketch adjacent to the building, but there will be no cross operations between the two licensed areas. Looking for a motion to approve the special pouring license with the VFW.
I will make that, I will make that motion.
And I will second that motion.
All right, is there any discussion? I will call for the vote?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Let the record show, five in the affirmative. Motion passes. Another application for a special pouring license submitted by Darcy Faber of Unitarian Universal Society of Greater Springfield, of a 245 Porter Lane Road, Springfield, Mass. for an event to be held at the Barton Center, Fuller Dining Hall, on September 23rd, 2022, and at September 24th, 2022. Darcy Faber, Director of Family Ministries for Unitarian Universal Society of Greater Springfield, has applied for a special pouring license for Saturday, September 24th, 2022, for a religious community gathering to be held at the Barton Center, Fuller Dining Building, located at 30 Ennis Road. Looking for a motion to approve the pouring license.
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All right, I will call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I will vote yes. Let the record show, five in the affirmative. License granted. All right, the town is looking for a reduction or elimination of building demolition, demolition fee for Jocelyn Annex Building, requested by the town manager, Jennifer Callahan, and Building Commissioner, Patrick Duggan. The town manager, along with the Building Commissioner, Patrick Duggan, asked the Board to reduce the demolition permit fee for the Jocelyn Annex, all right? And the actual cost of the permit is $1,645. Based on the cost of the construction demo, the request is to allow the reduction of the permit fee for the state minimum for demolition of $50. So looking for a motion to reduce the fee for demolition from $1,645 to $50.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Robert?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if maybe you, you discussed it with the manager. I was wondering about, so obviously they have a contract where they're paying a certain amount. Maybe Dennis can speak to this. I was wondering if this is a normal thing, because obviously any normal person would have to pay the full fee, but they're already billing the town, and so is it part of the contract that they get a discount and therefore, because it's, you know, if they pay us, if they charge us a certain amount, and then we just take a portion of that back, you know, for the fee, it kind of, it evens out, and so I was wondering if you had any knowledge about that, why, why we're doing this?
I don't think we want to bill ourselves. I think what we're looking for is the, you know, for us as a board to reduce the fee to the town for $50 from $1,645.
But is that, so have they already agreed to a price, or is it...
No, I think we're, they have to pay the fee, in my understanding. They have, Tony, I don't know, maybe you can, is Tony here? Why don't you come up and, he's, Tony's here, he'll be able to help us on that.
Good evening.
All right, good evening.
So the fees for municipal projects are, can be waived through this process. The, the $50 is a required fee, unfortunately, minimum, but to the chairman's point, municipal projects' fees are waived.
So, so it's the expectation with this contract was that it would be waived, and so it's not, there's no, the town's not losing any money by not doing this?
No, and I appreciate the question. I do, I understand what you're saying, no. The town is not losing any money.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert. Any other discussion? Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Tony. I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Let the record show that the fee has been reduced to $50. Another request, this is to use Jocelyn Park on September 28th, 2022, by Celeste Skariglia of Cowork Staffing, 171 Charlton Road, Sturbridge, Mass. I guess I'm looking for a motion to grant this request for September 28th, 2022.
I make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a double second.
You got it first.
Any discussion?
Um, I don't, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Do you know why kind of this was presented in our packet this way, just?
I don't know.
I wasn't sure.
Is there anything? Okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
What are they doing? I'm sorry, I don't have the other page.
September 20th.
Oh, in the town column?
Well, we don't have a policy of what is allowed and isn't allowed.
Okay.
So, that may be something we want to come up with as a policy, right? I think we all agree on that. But I'm going to put you in charge of that.
I will add that to my list.
Yeah, sure. Instead of reducing, I want you to add.
Okay, all right, I got you.
If you could work on that, I would appreciate it. Are we all in agreement at that, that we need a policy?
I think it's appropriate.
Tim? Okay, so, the issue at hand is, are we going to allow them to use Jocelyn Park? So we have a motion, we have a second, I'm going to be looking for the vote.
I'm going to vote no.
Yes.
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 And I'm going to vote yes as well. So let the record show, four in the affirmative, one negative, but we are going to get a policy regarding this for the future. All right, now we can do the other, we can make room for this new policy, Amy.
Oh, oh, yes.
I'm going to turn this over to you. We have, continue to work on our policy guidebook here and reducing it. Amy, if you want to take over and tell us the, the three policies that you're looking to eliminate.
So policy number 703 has to do with group health insurance. I spoke with Joanne Frederick, who is our HR specialist for the town, and she feels that this policy can be rescinded.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to rescind policy number 703, which deals with group health insurance.
I make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. I'm going to call for the vote.
Yes.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out to residents who aren't aware of this, that from what I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Selectman Frickett, it appears that they have old health insurance policies from decades ago, and they're like 30 or 40 pages of the policy binder, just each one, and I don't have any idea why on earth this is, this was selected as a policy and why it's still in there.
Well, that's why we're getting rid of it. We're all on the same page, and that makes sense. Anybody got anything else? Okay, call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. Let the record show, policy 703 has now been eliminated by a vote of five to zero.
Policy number 704, same thing, it deals with group health insurance, and Joanne also feels that this one can go as well.
Okay, I'm going to call for a motion to eliminate policy, policy 704.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? Tim, you're all set? Okay, I'll call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I will vote yes. Policy 704 has been eliminated. And the last one?
Policy 1611A, coin-operated automatic amusement, which actually goes along with the pinball that we got rid of at our last meeting. This one states that you cannot have more than four coin-operated amusement machines per establishment. I think it's outdated.
Any comment? Oh, wait, I'll call for the, call for a motion to eliminate.
Motion to rescind policy 1611A.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Guys, you're all set? All right, I'll call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I will vote yes. Policy 1611A has been eliminated. All right, the next thing, and with Jen not being here tonight, I'm asking Dennis to go ahead and just read the town manager's report on her behalf. So Dennis, the floor, it looks like you've got a lot of.
Thank you. Number one is a distinguished budget award. Since our last meeting, she was very excited to share with everyone the news of financial team was able to secure the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is GFWA, for the current fiscal year's annual budget. This is the second award from the GFWA and represents a significant achievement for our public boards and staff to meet the highest principles of government budgeting, as we continually strive to meet national standards with other municipalities from across the country. It is a distinct honor to work with such an exceptional financial team. The second thing is the state certification. Since becoming town manager earlier, free cash certification has been one of our financial team's priority goals. This year, our finance director, Katie McKenna, achieved a personal professional best by submitting all of our reconciliation documents before September, which is a tremendous amount of work in addition to starting the new fiscal year in July. Because of all this hard work, our free cash figures were officially certified on September 1st by the DOR, which is right on time for us to now consider as part of our planning for next year's capital and operational budgets. The certified amount of available funds as of July 1st, 2022 are as follows. In the general fund, we have $3,178,740. In the enterprise sewer fund, we have $250,875. And in the enterprise water fund, we have $297,930. Number three, the public land auction. Per the advice of our tax title attorney and auctioneer, the public land auction originally slated for the first week in September was postponed. The new scheduled date for the auction is Tuesday, October 18th, at 12:00 p.m. This live public land auction will be held here at town hall and consists of now three properties, 445 Main Street, 36 and 1/2 Dana Road, and 117 Main Street. Interested parties should contact the Zico's Group website for more detailed information. Again, this action is part of an overall strategic financial management objective to reduce Oxford's overall outstanding or uncollected taxes. The third item is Public Safety Day and Grants. Please know, our police, fire, and public works departments are gearing up to host an official Public Safety Day on October 9th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Jocelyn Park. There will be many activities for the public to experience, especially ones focused on educating our children and youth. I will share further details as we approach the exciting event. Additionally, our police chief, Anthony Sad, has informed the manager's office, the Oxford Police Department is receiving not one, but two grants. The first grant to announce is for the Executive Office of the Public Safety and the Securities Municipal Road Safety Program totaling $22,264.56. The second grant award is from the State 911 Department Support and Incentive Program totaling $51,570. These grants provide vital support to our policy and emergency dispatch programic needs. Congratulations to the Oxford Police Department. Our cannabis retail RFI, this is a reminder, the Board of Selectmen will be having another meeting tomorrow, I believe, right?
Yes, it is, at 6 o'clock.
Specifically, here in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, to consider the Cannabis Review Committee's recommendation concerning the proposals submitted to obtain the second of only two marijuana retail licenses available in Oxford. Three companies are out, three companies out of the six that submitted proposals will be presenting to the board. The review committee will also be on hand to articulate its rationale for making its recommendations to the board. The next item is our community center feasibility forum. In 2020, town meeting approved a $50,000 appropriation to conduct a community center feasibility study as part of the town manager's 2020 capital program to implement a major objective of the town's master plan. A community forum to share the progress of the feasibility study with the public will be on Wednesday, September 28th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. in the community center's gymnasium. The consultants from Barry Dunn will be on hand to present and share potential future renovation goals for the building and the grounds. Following the presentation, there will be a breakout session to answer questions. Consultants will also be gathering general public input, along with community center program user feedback on desired services, programs, and amenities. The next is the election in town meeting. The town clerk, staff, and all of our election workers did a great job in holding the recent state primary. Of course, now we have the general election scheduled for Tuesday, November 8th. Once again, the town will provide for early voting over a two-week period to the election. It will begin on Saturday, October 22nd, and run on designated days until Friday, November 4th, at the senior center. The specific early voting dates and times are posted on the town's website. We shall again be posting election information across our electronic communication sites as well. In terms of our upcoming town meeting, the last day to register to vote, to participate at the meeting, is Friday, September 23rd, at 5:00 p.m. Next item is our historic commission books. I wanted to announce, the town hall has been recently cleaning out some of its numerous storage areas and discovered a number of books printed to celebrate the town's 275th anniversary. The treasures collector office is extending a limited offer for the public to purchase one of these special books published in 1988 called Oxford's History Memory Book. This is a lovely hardcover historical compilation of Oxford's history as a community from its early settlement up to its 275th anniversary celebration in 1988. The book purchase price is $17.95, and anyone can buy the book through the treasure collector's office, cash or check. All proceeds from the book purchases shall benefit our wonderful historical commission that works hard to keep our town's past memories alive for all of us to learn about in the present. Then we have bulk drop-off. It's never too early to announce the official dates for bulk drop-off. This fall season, the dates for that are Saturday, November 29th, for the areas of Oxford Center and North Oxford, and Saturday, November 5th, for the, from the Oxford Center to South Oxford. During both those days, residents will be able to drop off bulk items at the Oxford transfer station from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Please see the town's website for acceptable and unacceptable items listed. One important change to announce is due to the new mass DEP waste ban, the transfer station can no longer accept box springs or mattresses during bulk drop-off days. Next item is our emergency preparedness. September is National Emergency Preparedness Month. The month is recognized as the time in which to raise awareness about the importance of preparing residents and businesses for future potential disasters and emergencies. One of the many roles the Director of Public Health and the Board of Health jointly have involves planning and preparing for public health emergencies. There is important community outreach underway to help educate and assist our residents to become better prepared for public health emergencies. If anyone is interested in being a volunteer to assist during public health emergencies, they can visit the town's website to learn more at www.auxfordmass.us/board-health/bulletin/become-volunteer.
Boy, hope you got that written down.
And that's all I have, I guess.
You may have a new job. All right, Dennis, thank you very much. I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Can we take a moment to congratulate Katie on her award?
Katie, we want to take a moment to congratulate you on the award you received.
Well, thank you very much.
That's very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Now I'm calling for a motion.
I will make a motion to return.
Second. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned, tomorrow night, 6 o'clock.
That's it, just the quote?